I'm going to call to order the meeting of the zoning commission of the city of Danbury for Tuesday, September 11th. Is this for my city? No, no, that's why it threw me off for a second.
Sorry, guys, I screwed up.
So today's not on the 14th?
No, it's September 11th, but I screwed up.
That's the reason for the pause of the day if you caught that.
They get a different judgment than you guys. Okay. Yeah. I was just about to say.
Commissioner Estefan.
Here.
Commissioner Haddad.
Here.
Commissioner Hu is currently absent, but he's not available this evening. Commissioner Jowdy.
Here, thank you.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Kovacs.
Here.
Commissioner Loyola.
Here.
Commissioner Tierney. Assistant Commissioner Oz has had failure obligation this evening. Alternate Commissioner Orvitz.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Kahl.
Here.
And I am Commissioner Roy, I'm here. Our next regular meeting is going to be scheduled for October 9th, 2012. The second zoning commission meeting that runs September when we'll be canceling due to the observance of the Yonkers Board. With that, we would please stand for the pledge allegiance and also do we could tonight also just remain standing for a brief moment in commemoration of all those who lost their lives in the same way. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we have two sets of minutes for this evening, minutes from June 12th, 2012, and August 14th, 2012. Because both meetings in July were canceled and the second meeting in August is canceled, so at this time I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes from June 12th and August 14th. Made by Commissioner Haddad, seconded by Commissioner Loyola. Discussion, clarification, deletions, changes, modifications of those minutes. Now, are all of you in favor of accepting those minutes? If you're saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion passes.
I thought it was nice to get. You should have said it was a mistake. You should have said it was extra work. Yeah.
Besides, you caught it too quickly to really catch it.
Sorry.
Okay, we have two public hearings this evening. The first one, we're just going to be opening and continuing. The first petition is petition Toll, Connecticut 3, LP, Sawmill Road, and 13 to 37 Old Ridgeberry Road. This is lot number A15005, A16002, A16004, A17006, B15001, B15002, B15005, B16001, B16002. I think they just can't continue this, so I have to read these all over again. B16003, B16004, C15021, C15022, C15023, C16012, C16044, C16045, and C16046. To revise the master plan of the reserved P&amp;D zone. So I will officially open the public hearing and at this time I'll entertain a motion to...
Wait, somebody's even asked.
Oh, I'm sorry. Also, Mr. Chairman, let us call for his opening of his petition. So is there anybody here who wishes to contribute?
Sure. I'm Matt Madison with Toll Brothers.
So, I don't know if it's working. Actually, no, wait, I did what? Give me one pause or one second. We can treat it like a regular public hearing.
You can read the name.
I will ask Commissioner Estefan to begin.
You can just say your answer.
Now, this is hereby given with the zoning commission of the city of Danbury will hold public hearings commencing at 7:30 PM on September 11th, 2012. And the council chambers on the third floor of City Hall, 155 East Yale Avenue, will consider the following matters. Petition of Toll Connecticut 3, LP, Sawmill Road, and 13 to 37 Ridgeberry Road. And all properties that were already said by our chairman. To reserve master plan of the reserved P&amp;D zone. Petition of the city of Danbury by Dennis I. Elburne, planning director, to amend section 2B, 3C, 3F of the zoning regulations, entertainment activities with special permits. Parties that interest in this and shall have an opportunity to be heard at this time, Robert Seabull, chairman.
Okay, is there anybody here who wishes to give their favor of petition on behalf of this petition?
Sure, I'm Matt Madison with Toll Brothers. And I'd like to open and continue the hearing until next month without any testimony this evening.
Upon request of the applicant, we will accept the motion to continue the public hearing. Made by Commissioner Kovac, seconded by Commissioner Estefan, discussion on continuing the public hearing. All of the favors, if you can say aye, aye opposed, the public hearing will be continued until October 12th. Our second public hearing of the petition. It's a petition of the city of Danbury by Dennis I. Elburne, planning director, to amend section 2B, 3C, 3F of the zoning regulations, entertainment activities with special permits. The legal notice is already read into the record. I have a note here to ask Dean if he wants to read it with the Danbury Department of Stat and Core and Planning Commission recommendation, which is possible.
Well, I just sent this information to Stat and Core. Do you want him to read that?
No.
Okay.
Then what will I do is I will read these planning commission recommendation, then I will turn it forward to Mr. Elburne. September 6th, 2012, to Robert Seabull, chairman of Danbury, zoning commission from Arnold Vision Valley Jr., chairman of Danbury Planning Commission, representing E3A referral petition of the city of Danbury by Dennis I. Elburne, planning director, to amend sections 2B, 3C, 3F of the zoning regulations, entertainment activities and special permits. As the regular meeting held September 5th, 2012, the city of Danbury Planning Commission voted to give the above reference petition a positive recommendation for the following reasons. These amendments will coordinate the language of the zoning regulations with proposed changes to the code of ordinance requiring entertainment licenses in the downtown revitalization zone. They also will update longstanding deficiencies and provide for greater clarity in the zoning regulations. The motion to give a positive recommendation was made by Mr. Deere, and seconded by Mr. Keller, in action hands. Mr. Elburne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The notice in our agenda referenced entertainment licenses, that is somewhat inert. We're not going to be discussing the entertainment license for many. In fact, that is not a matter that we should consider. It has been referred to City Council, and that is their purview. And as it stands now, they are in the process of scheduling the public hearing on that, after which to take action. What these are, are a series of...
Are you talking about the any commission recommendation?
I was talking about the agenda that went out, said entertainment licenses would sure set entertainment activities and special permits, because that's what was supposed to say.
Okay, but, so is there a potential issue as far as notice?
No, because the sections are set.
The sections are set. And there is in fact a reference in the amendments which says entertainment businesses are required.
Yep, so I just wanted to get that clarified before we continue, because if there was, there was no sense in making the due consideration.
We are proposing amendments to the zoning regulations pertaining to the entertainment activities and special permit uses. These amendments will coordinate the regulations with proposed changes to the code of ordinances now before City Council requiring entertainment licenses in the downtown revitalization zone. As proposed by the Main Street Task Force Report entitled Downtown Danbury Issues and Recommendations. Other changes to provisions relating to special permits are also included to complement new provisions of the code to update longstanding deficiencies and to provide for greater clarity. I will give commentary as we go through these. Note that throughout the amendments, our previous references to the Connecticut Department of Liquor Control have been changed to the Correct General. The Connecticut Department of Consumer Protection Liquor Control Division, so you will see that again and again. What we have, what I will not comment on, except perhaps quite briefly, are changes that were included for clarity. There are some tortured language in the existing regulations, but they are not, the changes are not substantive in nature. First, I want to discuss definitions. We have additions to the definitions for cafes, taverns, and restaurants. They clarify that entertainment activities are permitted in cafes, taverns, and restaurants located in the CG20, CA80, and CCBD zoning districts. Other districts that include these uses may not engage in entertainment activities. They include RR10, that's a very small zone, by the way. P&amp;D. LCI40, that's a strip of a zoning district down Route 7, south. CL10, which is a limited perimeter zoning district. And CN5 and CN20, those are neighborhood commercial districts. And in these cases, we felt that entertainment activities would conflict with the purposes of these districts. And it could create land use conflicts and all traffic concerns. And that's why we did not include it. So you see the addition. The cafes, restaurants, and taverns, that they may include entertainment activities as herein defined located in these certain districts. So what are these activities? Entertainment activities include musical or theatrical performances, dancing, comedy acts, educational programs, lectures, readings of literature, or similar activities with or without exceeding, as herein restricted. My third definition, fourth definition on entertainment and/or education center. This is a use that's only allowed in the downtown C&amp;D and district and mall of those, list of all those uses. And simply referenced that they are entertainment activities, because then they are named and defined right now, so I don't have to state them all. Little course meals included as from the state regulations regarding restaurants. And that just simply brings us in line with the state requirement. Hookah bars are defined, they are not permitted in the city as yet. There's been some discussion of these, but the way I have left for this is that if somebody wants to open a hookah bar, they will then have to come in and appeal to the zoning commission to add that as use. This is specific separate use.
Excuse me, what? Excuse me, Mr. Elburne? Why are the bodyguards who exclude that particular entertainment component? Why didn't you say that's not allowed?
A hookah bar?
Yeah, was that in the original?
No.
So you're suggesting that you put it in now?
I'm not on the definition. Only because further on, I make reference to it, okay? And, but it's only, it's not, I'm not suggesting it here as a separate use. But what I am saying is that in the future, if you want to add it, now you have a definition. You can use it in place. But I needed to put it in here now, because the next page, you see, I did make a reference to the hookah bars. I don't want to reference that unless we...
Can I ask, where? What research did you do, or where did you find that this is the best definition for hookah bars?
From other places.
Other places.
Other communities.
Okay, so this language is consistent with other places that define them?
Yes. Yes.
Because that's what they smoke in, is herbs and tobacco?
Well, the herbs, I'm trying to make it general. It's typically tobacco, but...
So like what herbs do they smoke?
Well, I don't know. The only reason I'm getting that in there is if in some time in the future, well, you can obviously smoke illegal products.
Herbs.
Herbs, yes. But who knows? What may come up? This is an evolving use.
Yeah.
There's one that has to do with oxygen. People ingest oxygen. I'm not sure what you get out of that, but...
High.
Uh-huh.
What do they do?
You want?
High.
You get high from oxygen?
They go high.
I mean, should all be high right now?
We need a lot of oxygen.
I was thinking, I was wondering about laughing, yeah.
I thought it was like helium makes a voice on it.
Yeah. Anyway, I'm trying to cover all those.
They got oxygen bars on the whole table today.
Okay. Okay. Okay, restaurants, in our special permit, we talk about, and that's only where they're serving alcohol. We talk about no less than 60% of patron seats are regularly devoted to the consumption of meals. Well, I took that out of special permits, put it in the definition. Why? Because at least theoretically, you could have a restaurant without alcohol. Theoretically. So this covers all possibilities.
You said they need to call restaurants with alcohol.
Right.
Alcohol is served on it.
Yeah, and that is, and I want to be clear, that's just a matter of definition. What is a restaurant? It's a place where you go and you sit on tables, you know, standing bars. That's all that is. The restaurant permit, you see, I made some changes there. The language is somewhat convoluted, but it's come straight out of the state regulations, which explains why it's somewhat convoluted. And I think by conclusion of cider, I think you can see how old these regulations are.
Yeah, but, so you're saying that a restaurant permit doesn't have to get approved from the Department of Consumer Protection any longer? It's strictly from the liquor control?
Only if... Only if there's certain alcohol.
Only if there's alcohol.
Yeah, the liquor control.
Oh, we're getting to that. We'll get to that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Enough with definitions. This is going to be a little precarious. So what are entertainment activities? Well, I have to find them. And then we went through the whole list of uses that are allowed in zoning regulations and said, where can you have entertainment activities? And the term entertainment activities is important, because that's referenced in the entertainment licenses before city commissions. So that's why I have to talk about this. And I included everything in there where you could possibly have entertainment, including schools. Schools have entertainment, churches have entertainment. They're not all dance clubs and banquet halls and so on. But then I mentioned that hookah bars and adult business uses, and I don't need to equate the two, but for purposes of regulation, they are not allowed in all or in part in any of the uses specified above. In other words, you can't open up a club and have dancing girls and say that this is permitted as an accessory. It's going to be specified as a separate use, same rule as... Now we get into Teddy's favorite section of the zoning regulations, special permit uses dealing with the regulation of alcohol. Well, I didn't mean it that way. I know it's really, well, maybe I didn't. Anyway, three of two, I just put those things in alphabetical order. And then when I started building premises or portions that would be used and so on and so forth, without receiving a permit from the Connecticut Department of Consumer Protection, unless the person seeking the user, applicant, blah blah blah, shall first obtain a special permit from the zoning commission, comes to us first. Let me make a note of this, because I actually, there was some confusion on this. I ended up calling the Department of Consumer Protection and ran into a fairly intelligent guy who explained to me something which I had never understood before, was never made clear, that local municipalities can include any number of uses that serve alcohol to come before the zoning commission. You can do that. And there are tons of them. Here's the book. And it is... Do you have trouble sleeping at night? I would recommend this, hi. Or, in my case, sleeping at the job. As I was going through all of that. But they, you know, they have, they have to give permits, liquor permits for hotels, drugstores, I don't know what drugstores are, clubs, country clubs, and many, many others. Any place possible where alcohol can be served. Now, where we don't specify, and in our case, you know, it's cafes, taverns, grocery stores, packer stores, restaurants. For everything else, and this is the process that we've been following so far, the application goes into the zoning enforcement officer, and he simply views the application as a terminal lines with our zoning regulations. Things like, is the use allowed? Is a hotel allowed? Does it need the wide side of the sufficient space for this to be used? Before that he approves an application for a zoning permit, and then it goes to the state.
So, Mr. Elburne, so currently there are... Now, is that a new use or...
No.
Or is currently there a new, is possible for a new, under that aspect, would it be possible for a new business to come in? Not with the city, like, let's say a hotel, since you mentioned a hotel earlier. For a hotel to be built and get obtained a liquor license, but at no time the, this commission would let us sit and hear whether or not...
Exactly, and remember, we had, this issue came up before.
Right.
And we were somewhat confused, and why are we confused? Because it doesn't say any of that in this book.
He does sign off on drugstore permits.
The zoning enforcement officer.
Right. Permits, but like I said, the laws and the power of residence are approved use for a site. Hotels, we haven't had that yet, but that is not something we have to continue.
Okay, and I want...
So we've had two. We've had the Hilton, and we've had the Residence Inn over next to Chucks.
Right.
Right. It does not have...
And so, but here, so then this, I am wondering about this then. So if we were to grant, or if, let's say, the zoning enforcement officer got the petition for a hotel to have a liquor license, and they move in the hotel, build a restaurant in the hotel.
Which they often do.
That restaurant would now have a liquor license.
No, but that's a different license.
It's still...
It's not a hotel license once they build a restaurant.
So this would specify, so it specifies as a hotel license.
Right.
So there wouldn't be a concern of them opening up a restaurant, potential bar, and then without any of that coming before this commission?
He would only sign off on hotel licenses if they were for a hotel license.
So private consumption in the room, like the two that we've heard already, where it was just looking for use in the...
Room service.
Room service.
Oh, did we do the one over in Congress Park for the lobby?
Yes, we did.
Yeah. But that was because then we need to sell the stuff somewhere, and they don't have room service, so they're going to sell the stuff in the lobby if you didn't do it with them.
Right. And then, but even the one over in Residence Inn, they talked about, I think it was Residence Inn, one next to Chucks, they had talked about selling in their gift shop, and so we had limited that. I remember the conversation, Mr. Farah was asking about it.
But we only...
We had, right, so would that come into play here, or is it solely for sale there for use in their, like, little mini bar in a room or room service? It's not anything in a, any other sale.
You get a, a hotel permit includes sale of alcohol, and it can include sale of alcohol in a dining room. It's not treated as a separate restaurant.
Right, I mean, it has to be a long dining room, like...
Yeah, we have, yeah.
And Sean, does this sound anything like asking if the...
And they go on and on about, you may run into this, can you remove a bottle, a half drunk bottle of wine? You may, you can take it as long as it's securely sealed and placed in a bag by the permitee. I mean, they go into such great...
I was doing that basic distinction between a dining room and a restaurant, thinking in terms of, of like, Holiday Inn. Is that would be a dining room?
Hotel permit covers all of them.
So that would mean that...
Holiday Inn is a separate restaurant. A place like that you might go to for concerts and they have breakfast, like a breakfast buffet, say, or lunch buffet. That would be a dining, that would be a dining room as opposed to a separate restaurant.
It is, and that's why I was curious, because can you, can they call it restaurant, a restaurant eating area, a dining room?
Check it out, lady.
And it's part of the hotel.
It's part of the hotel, yeah, yeah. Which, if you stop and think of Holiday Inn, that's part of the hotel, it's one big building, the room's right above it.
But I mean, I would think so, to want to maintain their own, since they function as a club, you know, that's another world issue. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a different use.
But I mean, like, whereas they do have dining rooms, so if you go there for a conference and you have lunch, and maybe you're having a morning beer.
Do you want to include this? See, my attitude is, why get...
My concern is, my only concern is, there are some hotels that you have non-hotel residents, it basically could almost become like another bar. You know, almost an unregulated bar.
Okay, I'm not the first one.
Bars, anybody. Anybody you want.
But it's a hotel bar.
It should, I'm thinking it should come here. A hotel should come before that.
Yeah, I need to handle that as a separate matter. I can't add this to that. Think about it. You want to include it, let me know. But the way it is now, you have to follow the regulations unless you want to specifically say, comes to us. And you know my opinion on this, I don't know why we look at this.
Yeah.
But that's my opinion. That's not required in all states, but it's peculiar to Connecticut. And we have location under general criteria, and if you look at those, point two. Where it currently reads, the proximity of such premises or buildings, and here we're talking about cafes, taverns, restaurants, grocery stores, packer stores, will not have a detriment, you have defined that it will not have a detrimental effect upon any church or school, convent, or charitable institution. I changed it, I added adjacent church. I mean, I, adjacent means nearby.
We were too general, you were saying before?
Yeah. Yeah, one good consider, that's a mean, a half mile away. And I added, or other place of worship, or school, and I cut out convent or charitable institution. I don't think we still have a convent in Danbury. And I'm not sure we do.
The adjacent, the adjacent means next door.
No, that's a buddy.
It's a buddy.
So adjacent can be as close as the next building other than...
Right.
So it couldn't be fifty feet, how many feet?
And I took out charitable institution. These are usually offices. And I don't see any connection between, let's say, a restaurant and an office. And why are we picking out one kind of office? So, that's what I'm suggesting. And the second one, this was really convoluted language, the location of such premises or buildings will not have a detrimental effect upon the immediate neighborhood concern. That's the way it's written. Due consideration having been given to the character of the surrounding area, neighborhood area, neighborhood. So I changed around, and the language there is pretty torture. To read, will not have a detrimental effect upon the immediate area with due consideration given to, one, the compatibility and impact of use on the surrounding area, including adjacent residential neighborhoods, which I think is a consideration. And two, the impact of use on traffic congestion and safety. And I think that's a consideration that we would often think of. And I'm just trying to spell these out.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like you're saying, you're not degrading the original intent you just brought up to two thousand and twelve words.
You're saying something, okay. The last sentence in the next paragraph is, we're a little special permission, I'm gonna give you help again. For me, in all other requirements of zoning regulations, that should be clear to people that wanna make this certain. So, for restaurants, we would require floor plans, I was only requiring for cafes and taverns. Including, because I think you need to see this, the area, if they're gonna have entertainment, where are those areas? Because otherwise I can file up your account and see this, and see. Package stores, there's really no change there, I specifically tried to clarify the language at two thousand feet. Separation of package stores.
Same point, is that right?
Yeah. And same with five hundred feet. And again, I limited it to schools and churches, and took out... And this is for package stores. I don't know why we're concerned about how close they are to charitable institutions, again, these are offices. Hospitals or libraries, I don't know why there should be, should be concerned about a separation. And the restaurants, again, we wanna see a floor plan, and I, and this was a difficult one, and I'm, I'm giving you guys some broad latitude here. Because what often happens is, you'll have a restaurant, and they'll clear out tables for entertainment after the kitchen is closed. And remember our sixty percent rule. So all I'm asking is, tell us when your full course meals are gonna be served, so that you can make a judgment as to whether or not this is in fact a restaurant, or this is gonna be a nightclub. There's a different, entirely different.
Who's gonna comply with that? Who's gonna comply with that?
What do you mean?
How's it, the restaurant, you're asking the restaurant to give you a schedule specific of their operations?
Hours when they are regularly to be served. When you close your kitchen?
Does the kitchen close at ten, does the kitchen close at twelve, does the kitchen close at nine? When the kitchen closes at ten D? Now, here's...
Now, I cook the word regularly in here, because I know there's gonna be some variation, and I don't wanna get hung up on that. But I want you guys to take a look at this, and your final decision is, is this in fact a restaurant? Or is it in the, a nightclub? Ain't that general?
Can I, I have actually a note here, I'm gonna ask this question now. Because it's actually, is, in light of this particular topic. If, in adhering with the application for a restaurant, let's say, and we, and they say, well, we're gonna, they're gonna close it, we're gonna move the tables out, and can we, as part of our purview, put conditions of not allowing an entertainment usage in that facility?
No.
So, we, so therefore we either have to approve and knowing, recognizing that, yes, they can, like, for example, they may be fine, there's no problems if they come in force on paper, and it would fulfill all entertainment, all requirements as...
I'll be back on this.
Where we normally have drought, holster use, however, we would not agree with entertainment, we can't limit that.
With general criteria. Would it have a detrimental effect on adjacent church or other place of worship or school? That's one consideration you will have to make. And would the location have a detrimental effect on the immediate area? And that means compatibility with adjacent residential neighborhoods, and its impact on traffic congestion. So you do have those considerations that you can take into account.
Right, however, in my mind, I'm thinking a restaurant and a restaurant with an entertainment venue would have different traffic flow going there. And so therefore, let's say, for example, this restaurant location would meet, say, yeah, we're perfectly fine with it, you having a restaurant, opening it up, and having a liquor license there. However, when you move ten tables on the way now at ten o'clock, and you have a van come in, and we have maybe another forty, fifty people come in, now you are changing the traffic congestion to that, so I don't approve of your entertainment use, but I do approve of your restaurant use. Would, we wouldn't be able to, like, we would do service bar only, and we can't, we can't restrict it that they can be a restaurant use, but they cannot be an entertainment use.
It says, restaurants may include entertainment. I'm not sure.
So, so because of the may, we would have your authority as a commission in our approval motion to limit that so that it puts, so that location, the may does not apply.
And the reason would be, because you're concerned about the impact of that use and entertainment on traffic. Now, that may not be the case, in all cases, it depends on location. Some specific locations, you may be very much concerned about that. You have a pretty broad discretion.
That can come through a condition of our approval.
Yep. You still have that right.
That's my question, yes.
So, so our approval would be, we approve it as a restaurant, but you can't have entertainment?
Yeah, we're gonna condition you that you cannot, you cannot use entertainment, you cannot, and you can't use your resident's drinking activities?
So restaurant, restaurant only?
Yeah.
Don't have to be cleared in here, or we just need to remember that?
I think it's something we have to do that.
I think...
Yeah, we have, we have other rights like that, I'm not certain, like, we condition, fair permits, I don't mean the first...
We can condition service bar only, is, you know, they come before us for a liquor license, and we say, well, we don't want you to have it, come up bar, we want you to have a service bar only.
If you're turned to... Under general criteria. Good, two A. And then there's special permission. See special permits to clear out?
Yes.
You all see that? B down, three up, two, A, see the general criteria? Then you got one, two, which I just talked about. And then there's a paragraph. And it says, zoning commission approving a special permit may impose such conditions as will ensure compliance with this section.
Yes, that's what I actually have in mind.
Now, withstanding other provisions of these regulations, zoning commission may approve, deny, or approve with conditions an application for a special permit for any use requiring a permit from a committee of consumer protection. No change there from what you know.
And then notwithstanding other provisions, will not impact the living and existing use that other provisions in these regulations?
So, now... Maybe discontinuance of use and eminent domain? We read over these many times. Two of the more confusing sections in the regulations. So we discussed this matter with corporation counsel. There's a whole body of law covering this. One is non-conformity abuses, and the others are doing the same thing. Get this out of our regulations, and, and that will be handled under existing law, which retains broad, um, to zoning, you know, conscious of this. And that was probably, but years and years ago, before there was a body of law.
And I may have misread, and I saw the elimination of discontinued use takes away from us the... So, so you're, so were you saying that when a store closes for, we, when we give a permit to somebody, and if they closed up, or they went out of business, or they discontinued their use, they would lose that permit? You're saying that we're eliminating that now?
No, the state can.
State law. So, so this comes under the law of non-conformities, and it deals with a very bobby, vague area of intent. The dealer have an intent to continue that use of the later date. And I don't wanna get into that issue, because it's so muddy, that I certainly don't wanna try to clarify it here, only to find us over in front in court, because we're not complying with state.
So you're saying that all along, our zoning regulation, as it stood, was just a reiteration of an existing state statute? It existed now?
Probably a combination of states that should increase law.
Okay. So again, to talk about the dairy, we used a dairy town on A near road. When they closed for six months, they lost their right to sell drive-through beer. So what, you're saying, when we had that regulation or not locally, that in effect was a state...
That's not...
Doesn't matter because it was a state.
So, when the restaurant is there, and they're serving beer, and then they close, and somebody wants to close, wants to go in, they connect it only with the state.
Depends on their intentions. And if you're gonna ask me, how do you know what their intentions are? Good question. That's a good question.
Mr. Jennings?
My question was pretty much related to the other commission member. If somebody wants to close, they wanna protect their interest and their business. Really didn't get a right answer here, but they need to notify the state, they need to notify us to say, for the zoning commission, to say, I'm closing, but I don't wanna lose my right to have that license.
Well...
Say, I'm not exactly sure, I wonder if I'm...
But there is a provision, or excuse me, there was a court case years ago, which said that if it's discontinued for a period of thirty days, it shall not be resumed except in conformity with set provisions. And my question was originally, I'm gonna end this. It says for a period of thirty days. Well, what if it's less than thirty days? What if it's more than thirty days? Does it have to be, the way it's, the way it's, this, this case was, it has to be precisely thirty days. And I thought, whoops. And that's when I went to corporation counsel, I said, you know, I got a problem with this, because this is what is blocking, and I think the state, some of these state, right there, case law that's come down is not that clear at all. So let us get help with this business. That's what I'm saying. We do have this whole body of law dealing with non-conformity uses.
So generally, if somebody considers, if it's an existing license, if it's been less than six months, Sean, it just sounds...
That's not...
Right, so other than that, if it's more than six months, it tells the right to do that expedition?
Yeah. Now, now, let's say he appeals, and he says, I had intention all along to continue. Let's say it's a year later, but, you know, I have a problem with the weather, I have problems with finance, and this and that, and then, you know, you gotta take all that stuff into account. And that's when, that's when it becomes a legal issue, and that's when it becomes a legal issue.
Then it's definitely do if they simply own, or not?
No, it could be separate.
Simply own, yeah.
Sell the permit.
You know, the permit goes with the land, so therefore, so if we, if we were, if we, we arbitrarily could place on Main Street, a trellis, okay? We did what we did, a few months ago, I don't know if you remember, the people, the trellis came before us, they wanted to, they wanted to have a liquor license. I think it was a full liquor license, wasn't it? It was a full liquor license. Actually, at the time, the Deed family still owned it, but we knew that the Deed family was wanting to be selling the, the, the restaurant, actually, they sold the restaurant, but not the building, right?
Right, they just sold the business.
Yeah, they sold the business, so, so they had to do a permittee. The, we conditioned the lot, the land, under the Deed family owning and running the business. They later sold the business, the liquor license to the state, and the little permittee signed up that the permittee name is changing, but the, the, the location, let's see what we'll remain.
Those are the main... They can sell...
If you sold your restaurant, you can sell it with the license. Somebody come in and buy it, they, then come in and take over your, they go and get the license in their name, and we would honor the fact that you had a license.
Okay, so they don't have to come from, from us anymore?
Now, unless it's more than six months.
No, because what we do is, we don't approve the individual, we approve the location. Remember, the land use board, we're approving land use, we're not approving the individual who's coming in and using the right.
Again, my concern is, the restaurant closes up, a buyer or someone who's in a particular building, closes up, he's not doing well, then down the road, if he sells, what is he selling? Is he selling, they said, what, if someone could come in, six months, eight months, a year later, and be eligible, not necessarily take it over, but be eligible, they have that liquor license.
For days, state, once a license is defunct, like, more than thirty days, the state doesn't honor it anymore.
More than thirty days for us.
Thirty days left, the state doesn't honor it after that period of time passes, so we've given it a random six months. If somebody, you know, can't get somebody to rent it, you know, it's unfortunate, but then the person's gonna rent it, has to come back in, but they would come to you and they would say, this place was approved already, and you...
Yeah, okay, right.
So it wouldn't be, like, starting from scratch, I mean, they just have to go through the process.
So my understanding is, they would come in, they would go down to zoning, the office downstairs, and the zoning enforcement officer would review the application, say, oh, yeah, this was, you know, it's only been five months since this is my location, so we'll kinda give a de facto city approval, but if it's been a year and a half, it's gonna get kicked upstairs to us.
Right.
That's actually a big jury.
Okay, sorry. Wrong de facto, wrong de, uh, technician. Wrong de facto, wrong de, uh, technician.
Yeah, I check with the state to see when the license was last, you know, and I give Sean a date.
And I think Sean juice it six months, he's trying to get a reasonable.
Right, he's trying to be reasonable, yes.
That's what he's trying to do.
Yeah.
Because I doubt that's written.
It's not, it's just his random choice.
It should go back.
Is that, what if it's the same owner, what if the ownership isn't changing, like the, the cultural center, right? I mean, they're, they're out because they've been repairing for a year and a half or whatever.
That's different, that's different, they, they don't, that's a different case.
All right, so let's just take a restaurant, somebody goes out of business and then a year later, then they want to just reopen it, they got to come back?
No.
They do not?
Nothing's changed.
Well, it, it's quite far as the state's concerned, making the license.
I think that would be one of...
The state pulled their license, really?
Yeah.
The state's pulled their license, they gotta come back.
Okay, how about, how about, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
If, if this restaurant, uh, pay, pay the, the license fee within a year, okay, they close the business?
The state holds it for the year. The state holds it, if they paid their fees for the year, the state will honor it for the year. Once the year passes, if they don't renew, then it's in debt.
So, if, if comes somebody who has different ownership, then it becomes a valid.
I think, I think what we're looking at here, I might try to maybe just see if I can clarify this and move us along. Um, the state looks to the city, meaning this board, to give city approval for a liquor location approval. If the, the state has its rights that, after so long, um, the state will not recognize you as being in effect, so therefore, you would be almost like a driver's license or a license plate. If you, if you have a car and your license expires, and you've had an expired license for more than a year, then you don't, you can't just go and give your license, you actually have to turn in your old plates and get new plates reissued. Um, it's similar way with the, with the, with the liquor license. If you, if you, if your license, liquor license has expired or not been in use for over a year, you have to go in and apply for a new license. Um, in which case, what they're saying is, part of the state approval of your license is, if you're coming for this board, if this board gives the city approval, then yes, you can operate a liquor location out of that license.
But I mean, if you pay for a year and then you don't stay open the year, they still honor it, stay honored it for the year. But once that expiration date comes out, if nobody renews it, then...
Okay. Want to read over that? And that domain? And I hope you will agree with why I took that out.
It's completely out.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if the city takes a property and to the owner, and they have a right to reopen some parts of their city, that the zoning laws allow them to use, so it's almost like it doesn't...
I don't see anything about you guys looking at it. That was a new segment. Okay. And that five hundred.
Oh, that is true.
Yeah. Even though it's over in five hundred feet. Of the perimeter of the area taken by the power, eminent domain.
So, if you take all the Main Street, you know, within five, you could, you could have been down by, uh, Eden, uh, Laurel Gardens, and you go within five hundred from Robert's Avenue.
Now, this issue is more apparent, probably more apparent than real, because I've been here for twenty, twenty-four years. And I don't ever recall estate being property.
And if we do, it's certain that a whole parcel may be stripped.
Or take a highway strip or something like that. I don't have, I don't have a state.
Yeah, Roy, I think the last time I was in Danbury, it was in conjunction with the, with Kula Ken.
Well, it was redevelopment.
Yes.
Redevelopment that time, redevelopment property. But that was in the fifties and sixties. Before that.
We were mere.
I'm mere.
I think that was before Mr. Hannigan was in town.
I'm not sure.
Probably that, but it's been there a long time.
I'm not sure about that. Okay. However, the city takes you, you deserve it. Okay, and, and of course, when they do that, they have to pay. And you can't take property without just compensation, Sixth Amendment. Okay. Now, the last section is probably most important, because this caused most of the conflict. Okay, back in two thousand and three, City Center Danbury came to us and said, "We want you to eliminate cafes and taverns in City Center." That's the downtown core area. So, we said, "Okay." So, the zoning commission did. Now, they've come back and said, "We'd like to reinstate them." However, we've had problems with horizons in particular.
What is that?
Horizons.
What is that?
That's one that was on Hops Street. We really approved it as a elevator alley.
Oh, tonight, oh.
Yeah. They came in with a cafe permit, I believe it was cafe permit. And, and they had this for years, probably. And we had all kinds of problems.
He wasn't prepared for a full meeting.
Right. I have to take this, the...
I knew, I knew we were short of funds.
Yeah, we are pretty short.
All right. So, they wanted to, to put cafes back. Cafes, by the way, are where, where you would get most of this combination of some food, some drink, and entertainment. Okay? That's either junction as a cafe.
So, does the other place, I mean, the, the old Benedict's, we don't say that, whatever it's called, it's...
Okay. However, people were concerned about noise, trash, unruly behavior, et cetera, because of the experience we had had. So, that's when the mayor said, "Let's try entertainment licenses." And entertainment licenses have rules, and if you don't follow the rules, you pull the license. That's entirely a different thing than zoning. Um, okay, so that's working its way through City Council. So, what I've done is I amended this section. Taverns and cafes are back in, all right? And now I'm saying that on or after the effective date of this code of ordinances, whenever City Council gets around to that, uh, all on their gaming activities, and that list of activities they give you as defined, which are located with the, in the downtown revitalization zone, which is a little larger than the City Center, um, shall obtain entertainment licensing, uh, if required in this, this is their code amendment. Provided such uses specified in our laws are allowed in the zoning district in which the use is an active subsidiary. So, that's, that's what we're doing. And, um, hopefully, this will work. It allows cafes and taverns, as well as restaurants, which are everything. But it also has control on noise and other nuisances that can bother and affect, um, dangers.
I have one question about this. Does that mean that on or after the effective date of that code of ordinances, all those uses, let's say a cafe, use which currently is not permitted in that will obtain a license, but prior to that, once we, we do this, you can go in tomorrow, well, seven days after the publication, this goes into effect, and the law's going into effect, you can go in and pull a cafe license, and then operate as a cafe license without a entertainment license, and then just pull a license after that fact? In other words, are we reinstating the cafes and then allowing the entertainment licenses to be used thereafter? Like, for example, we're putting back in place, well, right now, in order to have a liquor license in this downtown district, you basically have to be a restaurant. You can't have, you know, you have to have sixty points, senior capacity.
Exactly.
So, you can't just have a bar that's got some food and...
And I can do that there, yeah.
Right. And so, so that means you can open up a cafe, we're allowing them to reopen cafe and taverns, and then let's say...
That is a word reopen.
Okay, they, they're open.
A new.
Open a new one.
Right.
Again, as pri- like they said, prior to two thousand and ten.
Exactly.
Um, and then let's say in, um, for some reason, another council gets bogged down and they don't get that order passed, those, we're reinstating those or those locations without, um...
The back.
A backup provision to ensure that those locations don't, don't overact the noise, uh, uh...
Meaning they can open a cafe and still have entertainment before this goes into effect?
Right. And in which cases, no, the, I mean, it's almost like going back how it was before two thousand and three, without the precautions that we're putting in place, or that the intent is to put in place, uh, to, you know, to recognize that need. I'm not making a good explanation, I think I did.
No, I mean, what you're saying is, is that if the City Council doesn't get to the entertainment license, does that mean that a cafe can open up and, and do that?
Yeah.
That's right.
And then they will need to open that to the licenses that already exist.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, they would, they would still have to get, under this, add, or add when that section, now, let's, let's say it becomes eleven dash eight, then it would no longer apply to eleven, it specifies eleven dash six, but, um, and it probably would be that way, because I'm sure the attorneys would have come.
Okay.
But, um, they would still have to get the license, but should they, but should they never approve a license, then they would...
All right. I was going to suggest, in your motion to approve, that you designate the effective date of this amendment to be the same as the effective date of the entertainment license as approved by City Council.
And that was only applied to this one section?
The whole thing.
The whole package.
The whole thing. Because when this, notice my memo to you is dated August fourteenth.
Right.
We originally thought the City Council would be done with this, but, and, and in fact, what the set was, it becomes effective October first. All right? Now, I'm not so sure. Yeah. They haven't even had a hearing.
Far off.
They haven't had a hearing, and to my knowledge, we haven't had an add-on.
Oh, wow.
No, I think, yeah, I think it just went before the council conference.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that, I thought they were...
So, that's the safest way to go. All right.
So, that kills a loophole.
Please, if you pack with cafe people sitting in these chairs, we...
Changes become accepted the same, the same day as the...
The newly...
The new ordinance date. Matches up the city, the embrace of ordinance date. Of ordinance eleven dash six. As approved by City Council. And then they're, they're back together. That's what I would do. Because even though this says, and this is the ordinance. There's someone in here. It said this became effective, will become effective October first. Uh, City Council doesn't have to do that. And, and if they go beyond October first, I don't think they want to make it effective retroactive. I don't see that happening. So, um, what I was trying to do is get us, you know, in line and done, to recognize that we're going to be in that same time period, so it wouldn't be any problem. But it appears that we will be, and that's why I'm suggesting, uh, that. So, all of this hinges on City Council taking its action in time we remember.
Notice how we turned that off there, suicide.
So, if you see, if you see, who is that guy?
I'm coming to make sure you, you, you...
Do you guys have any date for the, for the ordinance and entertainment licenses yet?
There's a public hearing coming on the seventeenth at this point.
Is that a two?
I was out on vacation, so I don't know. Okay, that's how I do it. So, both, both comments. All right, any other questions?
Just quick, when you, when you talk about the, uh, the Main Street Task Force report downtown Danbury issues, that, that's two thousand and seven, or nothing is possible?
That's all.
Mr. Kelly.
I don't know if this is appropriate, but, uh, what was the initial that got you leading this zoning section? What came to the city when you realized that you needed to make changes?
The entertainment license.
Other gear.
That, yeah, that's what got it started. And then, like everything else, in, in, particularly in ours, I mean, it's like there's, you know, there's Chinese boxes or there's little Russian dolls. You open one, and you think you've solved that problem, and whoops, you find another problem, and you find another problem, and another problem. And so, it ballooned and got more, much more complicated than I thought it was going to be. Um, and, but it also gave me an opportunity to clear up some of these issues that we've dealt with before with special permits, some of the convoluted language, for example, that we, uh, holed over in the past. So, it took me a lot longer than I thought, because I thought it would just be something now of referencing the entertainment license, but it was not. Because the entertainment license talks about entertainment activities, we didn't have definition of that. And, uh, so I had to include that, and once I included that, then I got to think about where those things should be allowed. And once I got thinking about that, then I started thinking about, well, what kind of uses can we, we'd be allowed to have all this stuff? And then I got into that whole list of uses, and then, you know, then, "Well, what about adult businesses?" "Oh, no, we don't want to do that." "What about hookah bars?" Well, you know, some people have a problem with that, so the thing just got more and more complex.
It's a snowball.
It's a snowball in summer.
Actually, it started in winter, to rest.
Into spring and summer.
Through summer, yeah, yeah, or fall.
Anyway.
Mr. Kelly.
Well, that's, the applicant is the city of Danbury.
Yes.
And did city Danbury or any representatives of the city meet with the so-called task district in a meeting to create this? Is that, is that involved?
We had met with, um, the, uh, was now the Main Street Partnership, which has members on it from the task force.
Todd and Brian, one of them. Todd and Brian, you want to go?
Andres.
Andres.
And I've talked to them, I've talked to City Center as well. I have a lot pretty fine toothed gum, like I've learned before you, but, uh, you know, because, uh, they are my kind. I'm not that, um, experienced in zoning matters, yes.
Let the record show, those were the same people that two thousand and three, they wanted to remove cafes and taverns that wanted back. Now, in doing so, also said the zoning commission was stupid for...
Wrong.
Which was that, that was the question?
I'm not sure they said stupid. What it's doing is it's, it's preventing bona fide cafes from opening. So, you are, and even so far as, suppose we get really upscale, and somebody wants to open a wine bar into the...
But the removal was based on the noise and the trash and that kind of thing, and you've addressed that with this entertainment license.
That's, that's the strategy.
As would be requirement for the added police force and things like that. We've already addressed it. It was just why my concern was if we put this in place prior to the entertainment license, you know, you're almost backdooring it, right back into the way it was.
So we're not essentially reinstating what was, we are making a change.
Well, actually.
Was done in the past.
Actually, what we're doing is we're keeping it the way it is, and we are kicking it to the council to actually make the change.
Yeah, but there, it's, it's a bit.
Sure.
Can somebody, like, have a case if they had a cafe, and it's, let's say, they went bankruptcy because they closed their cafe, or because the city forced them to close, now they're gonna, they're gonna allow it again, if these people, like, have a case to say, you know, because of you.
And then with the, we have to come back for.
And, and now we're gonna, they're gonna allow a, uh, hookah bars?
No.
Or they're not wanting to.
Now, if you remember, uh, uh, this actually been, hookah bars were defining, but if somebody wants to open up a hookah bar, they're going to actually have to petition the city of Danbury to make it allowed use in that zone that they're looking to open up a hookah bar. And all Mr. Elburne is doing is providing a legal definition of what a zoning rights, what a hookah bar would be.
Yeah, because when we say, uh, it's more the back than other herbs, maybe other legal herbs.
And assuming they're legal. In the same way, tunnel regulations do not have to prohibit, uh, bordellas. And women and otter, people who guys say, well, do you prohibit bordellas? Well, no, they're already illegal.
Mr. Kelly?
Nice question. With these changes, do you anticipate, uh, uh, pods or, or bars that will be non-compliance?
No.
That exist now?
Won't be required to get an entertainment license.
Yes, it will.
Oh, there'll be no grandfather.
No granddad.
No grandfather.
Come in for license.
And that's what this said, this says, on, on or after all.
So even if somebody just waited with any payment, they're going to have to get an license?
Yes, it will. Every three years. They have to renew.
There's no grandfather clause for this.
No.
Because, no, because at that point in time, it will not be a land use, it will be a city regulated activity.
People want everything granted, it doesn't specify land use, they want everything.
And they can bring that up with the city council.
Well, the first three years is free.
Is there a fee for this?
Wasn't the ones that were grantified, wasn't the first three years free, they'd have to pay after that? Those that were, would be grandfathered.
I can't remember.
Shame we don't have someone to advise us.
That's beautiful. To end, there's statements there between a person from council and one who they can advise.
Oh, I see.
Not necessarily.
It'd be nice, because it would be nice if there was someone here from the council who served on this commission.
Okay, I think we're getting a little, little far off topic there. Any additional questions, Mr. Johnson? Johnson, I have one question.
An answer to your question. Uh, that's under existing establishments.
Yeah.
Any existing establishment shall be continued, shall be allowed to continue providing entertainment, provided that it files an application, and there's, that's a form. No later than thirty days after the date of this ordinance, the first application fee shall be waived for such establishments. So they get waived.
And that's in the proposed.
Thirty days after?
And that's in the proposed. And that's in the proposed city ordinance, that's not before that.
Right.
That's, that's, that's in the proposed city ordinance of the city council.
It is.
It's council, it's not us, it's council.
Yeah, that's city council.
The public, the public will listen to the licenses from state and go through and see whether they're anything.
Now, I understand that this entertainment license only pertains to the downtown revitalization zone. And we run round and round, and that should apply city law. And there were those who said, well, but this adds another burden on downtown businesses, which we don't attract. So let's make it city law. The problem there is that there are lots of places that have entertainment, Darcy's, uh, Jim Barber's, and so on, and they're not causing any problem. And that's not the problem. So what problem are we solving there? What we're doing is making a huge administrative problem. Because there's so many cities. There are, I might add, a number of other inducements, so we businesses downtown, because we just passed a whole host of incentives. As some would say, a stimulus package.
QE three.
But not.
I'm going to say it easy.
Some Democrats may say. If you're a Republican, then it's, it's an incentive.
How much are those fees, by the way? Can't say anybody here has asked.
Oh, it's five hundred bucks.
Michael Jones, every three years?
Every three years.
Not really, I mean, it's still state liquor licenses.
And that issue came up.
I would vote yes.
And the mayor said, if you can't afford five hundred dollars, you shouldn't be.
That's what.
America do.
The mayor's never been in business.
Mr. Johnson, I have a question.
Yeah, but she's not in the senate.
It's a big problem.
As an employee of the mayor, I approve everything he says.
Mr. Johnson, I have one more question for you, and that is, should we decide to go back, as we were talking briefly earlier, and add a hotel back in as a special use that would come before us?
Can't do it now.
Would that, would that would be a substantive change or have to go before a public hearing?
Would you want petition for that?
Do you, do this, yeah, we would have to.
With this particular petition, right now, we've eliminated hotels.
We did not eliminate hotels, it was never in there.
Okay, so we would have to go in and actually have that come before us, separate from us.
Separate petition.
Okay.
And we decide we want and we should do it because we need to be able to uphold it if somebody comes in, because they will know you need a special permit, and they lie, it's down the bank, so if you decide to.
I'm not going to deal with you. Put hotels in and take our grocery stores.
Commissioner Johnny, do you know?
Is the, is the fee part of this application, uh, request, both words, it's already escaped? The fee of five hundred dollars?
That's in the license.
That will be, that's in the ordinance before the city council.
Before city council.
That's not before us.
Not that, uh, okay. So it's not your question. I'm with the.
Well, let, let me ask this question then. Since I can't ask, since I can't ask Mr. Johnson directly, I'll ask through the chair. Does anyone here know how much a business downtown club, tavern, cafe, restaurant, has to pay annually in fees to begin with, just to open up their door?
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit. I, I figured that.
Okay, and with that, I'm going to actually move us along.
Where do questions want to go?
We are really deviating from the scope of this petition now. So with that, um, if there's no additional questions, Mr. Elburne, is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody speaking in opposition to this petition? Anybody speaking in opposition to this petition? Anybody speaking in opposition to this petition? Mr. Elburne, do you have any rebuttal comments?
Yeah, about last comment.
With that, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Palmer? Oh, for the record, I will go ahead and seek Commissioner Palmer, uh, for the commissary term. And I will seek commissioner or events, Commissioner. Commissioner Palmer?
Who? Oh, who?
Do you need to change the script?
Uh, motion. The motion flows public hearing by Commissioner Palmer, seconded by Commissioner Estefan. Discussion, all of the favors, Mr. Kelly?
I was, uh, I was on at the September fifth meeting. And John told me his one meeting was.
This one?
This one. And this is the first time this is coming for this permission, this, all this.
Yes.
Well, what, are we, are we voting on this?
No, Mr. Kelly, all we are doing right now is we are closing the public hearing. At that, after, after we close the public hearing, we will then decide to either entertain a motion or not entertain a motion, move this as item number one under old business all this evening. If we move it under old business, then we will be able to entertain a motion and then either act or not act on that motion. So with that, further discussion. All of the favors, close of the public hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posted. Public hearing is closed. Seeing nothing under old business, nothing under new business, nothing under correspondence, nothing under other matters, nothing under current funding, um.
And mine, we put up a one that the meeting is October ninth. So we'll get a call back to the position.
My, I think that's just. Um, it's, we would be making contention with the date of the council.
Your fault, because.
How long does it take the council ordinance to go?
Two, three days.
Three days. So should the council go to, and I, at the first, their first meeting in October, approve the ordinance, it's still going to affect until the beginning of November. If we took action on this in November, in October, we would still make a contention on the same date as the effective of the council. So I would think we have a little bit wiggle room.
Close of the hearing, so sixty-five days to make decision.
But even, even, I mean, even with the recommendation from Mr. Elburne to make it to go into effect when the ordinance went into effect, we would still have some wiggle room.
Even on the.
Even October ninth, that's happened, so. I'm com, I myself am comfortable. No, if we, because if we post it, our ordinance is going to affect upon publication in the news times.
So if we publish it, you know, it would be published with the council that it became effective once the, uh, council acts. Same day, it's the effective date of the council's action.
But we have an appeal period after a date of.
Forty days. But we're immediate, so.
In which case, even with the appeal, we would just come back and repeal back the entertainment license, they wouldn't have the council, they would just have to repeal one of those aspects here. And that would only really apply to the cafe and tavern use in the downtown district.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would have, um, I would have made, I would have raised my hands and tried to push this petition to number one under old business for discussion of possible actions here, but it sounds to me like maybe Mr. Kelly would, would like to digest this a bit. If that's the case, I would appeal to that, so, okay.
I, I kind of took that as what he was asking for, which is why I kind of quickly moved over the, that idea.
I mean, we, we don't ever have to, I mean, we carry this by a boat, but yet, whenever any commissioner who says, I need some time to, to read on this, we always would do that. So that's what I gather from your comments, so, that's what I want.
So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Commissioner Haddad.
Yeah.
Seconded by Commissioner, made by Commissioner Haddad, seconded by Commissioner Liola. Discussion, all of the favor of adjournings, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posted.